Get it to leave us alone. We need to be able to come back out and enjoy life with him. Lord bless our troops abroad and at home. Thank you, Judge. Pledge allegiance and do the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
All right, are there any additions or deletions?
Mayor Proterm, I have a deletion.
Oh, okay, sure. I'm Jackson, gone.
Okay, I would like to delete, um, item, it's number eight, item C, approval to appoint interim town manager as interim finance director, Ms. Samantha Woolenwager, Woolenbanker, excuse me, and out, item D, the resolution to appoint interim town manager to interim town finance director, Mr. Jonathan Charleston. We as the board has not discussed that, so I'd like to put, um, have that taken off the agenda.
Doctor, Mr. Charleston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Proterm. If the board recalls, uh, there was a resolution adopted allowing the town manager to act as the finance director, and that's all that is, is allowing that to occur at the moment. Uh, Adam Lindsay is the interim finance director, he's along with us, so we're just cleaning up the record. It's, uh, it's nothing that the board couldn't change, or the lady Tye wanted to, but we need to go ahead and take care of this.
Mr. Garret?
Uh, Adam Lindsay was a, uh, town manager, and he's been the town manager for quite a few years. As it stands right now, we're in a process of setting this up so that a town manager would be able to take over. Uh, this young lady, I hope that's sound right. My town manager at the present time is an interim with no prior experience as a town manager. I don't think we really want to give her too much power, seeing how we haven't done this to the other town managers. Uh, Lindsay was the first one to, uh, take over that position, and that was because we've been trying to get it done for quite a long time. But, uh, I would hold back on this, and I'd go along with Ms. Jackson's decision, and I see no reason why, we're sitting here talking about it. She asked to have it deleted, so, uh, I feel we need to go and delete it, thank you.
So I don't see how deleting this is going to be relevant, because we can discuss it when it comes to the new business, and you can decide then and there whether to do it or not to do it, you can vote for it, you can vote against it. Keeping it on the agenda is not going to prejudice anybody's, um, so I think we should keep it, um, but I think someone else had a, an idea, Ms. Cooper?
Excuse, excuse me, can I speak? I would recognize Ms. Jackson.
After Ms. Cooper, you can speak, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. So, um, I wanted to first, um, the audit presentation number six, I think we need to delete, uh, because we have to hold off on that.
Okay.
And, um, uh, as to the, um, discussion of, uh, the appointing Ms. Woolenwager as interim town finance director, we have to change that, because currently it has Mr. Lindsay, uh, on there, and he's now in the employ of Fayetteville, so we have to make a change to that legally, um, so that's it.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, Judge Speaker. Ms. Jackson?
Okay, um, I agree with Ms. Cooper that we have to make a change on that, but we don't have to do it tonight. And when we voted to have Mr. Lindsay as the interim finance director, because he was the town manager, he also had experience. We're right now in the process of a lot of things going on, that Ms. Our town manager now does not have any experience dealing with. We need to start making smart decisions, and we need to see if we can set this to aside, so everybody have a chance to say what they need to say, and go from there. But making this decision right now, right away, without having input from, um, from all the board members, and to really discuss this, would not be good right now.
So I think we're kind of reaching into the new business discussion, we're going to be getting to all of this later. Uh, I think maybe we should discuss whether or not we want to delete this from the agenda, Mr. Charleston, would you agree?
Right, I think that, uh, the issue up for discussion can be voted up or down underneath this.
So I think the issue we have here is there are a number of additions and deletions to the agenda for today. Can we go them, can we go by them piecemeal, go by each addition and each deletion? So why don't we go on this, this deletion, uh, why don't we have a, um, is there a movement, uh, on this deletion, whether it should be allowed or disallowed?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, so are you saying that you're not going to, that you're going to not, um, under my request to have it deleted?
I'm going to put it to a vote, and the board will decide whether they want to delete it or not.
That's right.
So I think there was, uh, someone rang in, Ms. Cooper?
Um, I'll make a motion that we, we're going one item at a time tonight, right?
We will, yes.
I'll make a motion that we, um, leave items, um, A, C, and eighteen on the agenda.
Okay.
A, C, and D.
Yeah, A, C, and D on the agenda.
Well, I second that motion. Um, so can we move it for a vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor say aye.
I have, wait, wait, I have an unreadiness.
Okay.
I have an unreadiness. If Mayor Proterm is acting as the mayor, because the mayor is not there, then how is he voting as the august?
The mayor is on the.
Because the mayor is here, the mayor is here. So why isn't the mayor conducting the meeting?
Because the mayor would not be there for the full meeting. I'm, I'm going to have to log off in about twelve more minutes, and I will not be able to conduct the full meeting.
Okay.
And, and I, I just got online, and, and that's, you know, primarily due to my inability to log on.
Yes, sir.
And so you did the right thing by beginning the meeting on time, and I'm going to have to, because of our commitment, our log off, and then back on after that commitment is complete.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Charleston, how does that work then? Because if the mayor is not here, and the acting mayor Proterm is acting as the mayor, then how does he have a vote as an august?
That, that's a good question, but, uh, to your answer, the Mayor Proterm is not the mayor, he's just chairing the meeting tonight. The Mayor Proterm, the Mayor Proterm has a vote, the mayor doesn't, and so it's appropriate for him to proceed as he is.
So how do we break a tie?
Well, you may not be able to break, it's, it's the same thing as if you had one member missing.
Okay, I understand, thank you, sir.
Okay, that's the idea, unreadiness, all in favor say aye? Other one, okay.
Yeah. Uh, the attorney works for the board. I know we just went through a thing with him, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we've got him making up some more bills and things like that. This guy's getting paid every time we do something foolish on the board.
This is really just on this particular issue, the issue of this item? This is the item about appointing Ms. Woolenwager as a financial director, so this is only about this issue. We give that issue when that issue's time comes. Right now, the only issue for unreadiness is this issue of, uh, of, uh, deleting, uh, A, C, and A, D. So do you have any unreadiness about that issue?
Yeah, I pretty much stated it already, but, uh, that's, I wouldn't have stated it.
Okay, Ms. Southern one?
Thank you for recognizing me. The vote is already carried, it's already, so can we move on, please? We've already did the three to whatever, so it's already carried, uh.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the vote.
Okay, well, let's do the vote again, just to be sure, so all in favor say aye? Aye. All in favor, all again say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, good, moving on, uh, to the next addition or deletion. Uh, I have one as well, I would like to add, closed session meeting, NCGS Section 143, 318 dot 11, A4, Economic Development. Does anyone have an opinion about that particular addition? No? So then I move that we approve that addition?
A second.
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed say nay?
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda for today?
Yes, uh, Mayor Proterm, uh, item seven, A, we like to pull that from the agenda. We are still working through some of these issues with, uh, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department. We've been in communication with them, and we can bring it back before the next meeting. We've, uh, we've got time pursuant to instruction given to us by the county manager.
Gotcha, all in favor removing seven, A, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay? Okay, are there any other additions or deletions? Oh, Ms. Cooper?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Proterm. Um, I'm not sure if we're still going to discuss the amendment to the contract to audit accounts, since we're not getting the audit presentation, and, um, Ms. Woolenwager, can you weigh in on that?
Yes, ma'am, so, um, we are still discussing the audit contract. The draft audit is still under review by the LGC. The LGC has asked that the audit presentation be conducted at the April 26 meeting, when the LGC will also be here as well, and they will have the final review done for the audit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we will still discuss the contract, but ask that item six be removed, and will be placed on the April 26 agenda.
Okay, yeah, I did ask that it be moved, um, moved, thank you.
And I second that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay?
I'm here, I'm here with one. Why are they yelling?
I'm sorry? But Ms. Jackson, do you have something to say?
I think she was talking to someone.
Oh, sorry, someone else, okay, well, then, uh, moving on, uh, to the approval of the agenda, uh, would anyone like to make a motion? Ms. Cooper?
I move that we approve the agenda with the, um, said additions and deletions.
Okay, I second that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay? Okay, moving on, approval of consent items, uh, the consent items of draft minutes of the March 22, 2021 regular meeting, is there a motion?
Can you see that light?
Yeah, I can see it, but it's not on.
Oh, okay, well, I was agreeing, and you weren't, so, um, I'd like to make a motion that we remove, that we approve the consent item for March 22, 2021 regular meeting.
I second that motion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Okay, public comments, do you have anyone for public comments, Ms. Pearl? Okay, moving on, uh, old business has been removed, new business, okay, uh, uh, we are moving on to A, A, Amendment to Contract Audit Accounts, Ms. Woolenwager, if you would?
Sure, so before you tonight, you have the audit contract with our auditor, Lee Grissom and his firm, and the amendment is to modify the due date and the audit fee, and as a result of the higher number of findings that was listed, and you can see it in the contract, throughout the contract, it lists the reasoning, um, it is because of various financial documents and reports were not ready, and not completed in a timely manner, so therefore, that there was an additional amount of time, and that date went from January 31st to April 9th, and then there's an increased fee of five thousand dollars. And on page one of three, it also further discusses the reason for the modifications, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. The auditor firm is Test, Preston, Douglas, and Associates LLP.
Let's start with Ms. Southern one, Ms. Pearl, then.
Thank you, Mayor Proterm. Okay, looking at the contract, and I've been stating it for over a year or so with Preston and Douglas, they have a contract previously with the town, they failed to give presentations, and did not make the board aware of the weakness of the town with our finances in a timely manner. So, um, not going back saying what somebody else said, but, um, I think they should give us a refund and a reduction, because, um, they didn't do their due diligence, and they should have gave us presentations on a timely manner, until I called Rhonda Webb and asked Rhonda to call them to find out, that's when we found out that we were so behind in our audit. So I don't think they deserve, because they should have came to the board in a timely manner to let us know what was going on with our town audit. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Charleston, do you believe that this increase is in keeping with commercial custom in this area?
Well, what I will say is from time to time, when the scope of work changes, you know, the contract can bring that back before, uh, the party, and, and, but it's up to this board to determine whether or not they will agree with that. But if the scope of services are changing in a way, I think that, uh, in a material way, then it will be appropriate for the board to consider whether or not, uh, there will be a change in compensation, but it's up to the board.
Okay, but you, what do you recommend exactly? Is there any kind of liability associated with us for not accepting this? Is there, what are the consequences of not accepting this five thousand dollar increase?
Well, I mean, that's, uh, you know, you have a contract, and the, the work has been performed pursuant to that, and I would think that, that in most cases, what would happen is that if they thought that the scope was going to change substantially, then, then they would have brought that before you sooner. But, uh, you know, you never know the sequencing of things, you don't know that, you know, now that the LGC is involved, and other folks involved, the scope could have changed. I hadn't read the contract, but, uh, I, I do know that from time to time, the scope can change in a material way. But I believe if the auditors are here, you can let them explain to you why they think there should be a change.
Okay, Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, um, I, I agree we should change the date, I don't agree that we should, um, authorize an additional five thousand dollars. I too, um, you know, we did not find out that we hadn't had an audit until we, uh, were going to request a forensic audit after we let Mr. Druggo the first time, and that's, um, that's their job, we pay them, and that's their job to let us know if they're having issues, uh, getting the proper paperwork to do the job we paid them for. So, um, I feel like we, um, we were done with the service, and had they, um, they should have let us know well in advance that they were going to need an addition, additional fund. So I believe that twenty-five thousand dollars is, uh, sufficient, and we shouldn't vote for an increase.
Does anyone else have any thoughts, Ms. Jackson? I suppose, Mr. Garret, any thoughts?
They said it all.
Ms. Southern one, one more?
Uh, you said contract, uh, Mr. Charleston, this is amendment to the contract, so, again, as already stated, this is amendment to the contract to give them additional five thousand, what the work was not done, even though the LGC is involved, and should have been involved, I stated that prior to them, even when Mr. Watson was here, and everybody said everything was okay. So I just don't feel that they should get additional with this amendment, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion then? Ms. Cooper?
I make a motion that we, um, continue with the contract at the original stated fee of twenty-five thousand, but modify the date to April 9th, 21.
There, Ms. Garret? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all again say nay?
Nay, I mean, aye, I'm sorry.
Count that as a, as an aye, just.
Ms. Jackson, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just made a motion.
I heard.
Okay, so she voted, did you vote aye, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. All right, moving on, uh, number eight, B, Discussion of COVID-19 Reopening Plan, Ms. Woolenwager, if you will?
Thank you. Uh, the last board meeting was discussed to have at this session, um, a discussion of the COVID-19 reopening plan. I have met with the key department heads that have facilities that are still closed, as well as the entire department head team to discuss the COVID reopening. Um, Executive Order 204 went to effect March 26th, um, and it created new occupancy levels and other varying, um, control measures for COVID-19 and associated facilities, businesses, and, um, so, and as, as you can see, as we all watch the news, case counts are, the seven day, the rolling average is staying around the same, but there was a March 12th, and just to give some background, so we often have an informed discussion, March 12th, there was 1,998 cases, and as of today, there was 1,469 new cases, so, um, there is peaks and valleys in each one of those, in those cases, cases in the last month. So we have discussed opening the different facilities, uh, Town Hall is still closed to the public, and so are all of the other town facilities. Um, our proposal, and this is at the pleasure of the board, is to open town facilities on May 3rd. If the, as long as the proper signage, so according to the executive order, there is appropriate signage to be placed, masks will still be required at all facilities, as well as ensuring that your six-foot social distancing can be kept. Um, in this executive order, the six-foot is still listed in that order, so I want to make sure that we abide by that, as there is some guidance to lessen that to three, but the executive order does say six feet, so that would be my recommendation. And also, uh, there will be certain, um, precautions in place, so there will be markers on the floor, so people know exactly where to stand, um, people will not be able to congregate in the lobbies, such, we would have capacity limits. We work with our fire marshal, who would determine the capacity limits, not only for the facilities as a whole, but for each individual room, because that's also important as well, we have meeting rooms and such. And we are going to hear from two departments, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Senior Center Departments, but before we do that, I do want to let you know that I spoke with the CEO of Ketter Valley Hospital, um, today, actually, and they would like to do a vaccination clinic in town in Spring Lake. So I told them that I would let the board know tonight, and as long as, um, the pleasure of the board, that we would work with them to set up that COVID-19 vaccination clinic at Ketter Valley, um, they're doing it all over this surrounding area, so I want the board to be aware of that as well.
Do you know where that will be located?
So the exact facility has not been determined, um, ideally, they do not do drive-through clinics, um, Ketter Valley, they said that they prefer to have walk-in clinics, so it would probably be at the rec center, um, but in actual location where people who do not have access to vehicles, or they need to use sort of public transit, they can walk through it and be easily accessible for a sort of the population.
So I think Ms. Southern one, then Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, couple questions. Since you're talking about the vaccine, do you know what the vaccine they're going to be offering?
So he did say that they were going to be offering the J and J vaccine, um, he did say that, that's one way, because it's one vaccine, you don't have to have that, say an appointment, so that's one way to guarantee it's a full vaccination, um, but he said that would probably be the vaccine that they would use.
And did he give you a date?
No, so I asked him how long he needed for us to work together to plan it, and he said it could basically done within two weeks, but we want to make sure we give the public adequate notice, so that they can plan around their schedule and appointments together. So I would imagine we'll hit the next month.
Do they have to make an appointment, uh, is it a walk-in based?
I work with them on that asset, but just so people can, can adequately plan, I don't want to do something for next week, and then people don't have that notice for future schedules around.
Okay, and we want to make sure it's advertised as well, uh, advertisement in Fayetteville Observatory as well as on our TV stations, because they are advertising for other, uh, towns and, uh, facilities. Okay, and then you was talking about, um, the senior center and the rec center, did you say your recommendation, depending on the board, would be May 2nd?
Yes, ma'am, May 3rd, which is a Monday, um.
To reopen?
Yes, ma'am, for indoor.
Right, okay, because, uh, read a letter, and, uh, from a senior, Fayetteville Rec Center is sending out to our seniors as well, to let them know that they have reopened, and telling them about playing cards and different things that they're offering. So I'm just saying, they're reaching out to our seniors as well, so if we want to look into that to pick you back and see what's going on with them, but they are sending letters to our residents, which is fine. But I just want to, and they're open, thank you.
All right, Ms. Cooper?
Thank you. Um, the vaccination clinic, is this just a one-time thing, or will they do recurring?
This will be a one-time thing, but it could be a recurring event, um, if they, I would imagine, depending on the number, um, number of people participating, but it could certainly be something that happens for a month.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any other thoughts, Mr. Garret?
Um, I'm more interested in the Recreation Department and the Senior Center, uh, I guess we're talking seventy-five percent.
So we're going to have, if there's not any more questions about a vaccination clinic, I'm going to have, um, the Parks and Recreation Director come up and give a presentation, and then we will hear from the Senior Center Director as well. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mrs. Woolenwager, good afternoon, good evening, board.
Good evening.
How you guys doing?
Fine, very good.
I'm doing great. Um, so, yeah, I'm here to present the Phase Three, uh, transition to opening, reopening, uh, the rec center, Recreation Center at a limited capacity, um, or limited operations. So our hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays will be from 10:00 to 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sundays from 1:00 p.m., 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we are still, uh, we will still, just like we did with our outdoor, Phase One and Phase Two, will still be, um, enforcing or promoting, uh, social distancing, six feet, wear your mask, especially in the facility. Um, the facilities will, you will have to get your temperature taken upon, um, entering the facility, and you will have to sign a waiver form, a liability waiver form. Um, so see, these are some of the programs that we are, um, or some of the things that, some of the activities that we will have brought back to the rec center at limited capacity, uh, basketball, pickleball, uh, some of our, uh, adult and youth activities such as Zumba, um, Latin dance, self-defense class, youth dance class, just to name a few. Um, so this is our, uh, our capacity for our indoor spaces. This is based off our occupancy, occupancy level, um, through, and the seventy-five percent, um, seventy-five percent capacity of our occupancy. So, um, we'll have a ten-person max in our lobby area. Um, our gymnasium is up to 200 people max, that depends on the, uh, the priority of it. Um, our side classroom is up to 30 people max, and our multipurpose room is up to 65 people max. And we are, this is all due upon, um, social distancing, um, people being six feet apart, if you're not participating in a specific program. So these are some of our membership-based, um, usages. Um, we'll still, we'll offer pickleball, we started to offer that at the beginning, right before, uh, COVID started, or COVID happened, we, we started offering pickleball, that will continue that. Um, that'll be a sixteen-person maximum, um, in the gymnasium, that's a one, and they'll have to, um, do appointment only with a one-hour time slot. Um, basketball, same way, 20 people max, um, 20-minute time slots for indoor open gym. And our fitness center will be a four people max, one-hour time slots. And I got, I, I received this information based upon other agencies around us, such as Hope Mills, Western Harnett, and, um, those agencies. So, um, basically, uh, again, our coaches, volunteers, everyone will have to, um, be limited to, uh, a certain amount of people, again, uh, will not exceed seventy-five percent of the facility. Let me get the next slide. Just re-entering, um, so like I said, they'll sign a liability waiver form, um, a COVID-19 participant screening, you know, you ask your questions, uh, you know, have you been out of the country, or, um, have you had a, has your temperature been over this, this amount, you know, the normal questions that they ask you, um, if you go anywhere else, and you have to stay for a long period of time. Um, we'll take temperatures of participants. Um, we'll take temperatures of participants. I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Uh, we may have, like I said before, update the, uh, medical, uh, history for some of the, some of the, um, participants, as well as add COVID-19, have you had it before, have you, what were your symptoms, things like that. Uh, and then we'll provide first aid kits as well. Um, and these are some of the things, um, that if something happens, a case of emergency, of course, we'll still attend to a medical, um, a medical EMS personnel. Um, and each COVID, each coach or volunteer will, just like our outdoor, um, supervised programs, will be required to watch a, a COVID, um, safety precaution video, um, to, to know how to run their program during this time. And while, while they're in the building, all spectators will have to wear their mask. Um, we will have designated, as Ms. Wollin-Waver said, we'll have designated, um, spaces, um, for floor markers that will be six feet distance to let people know, you, you can't be too close unless we're, if you're spectating in the gym, we'll have markers on the bleachers. Um, and that you can't be, if you're not with a family member or someone that you came with, you must, uh, adhere to the six-feet social distancing rule. Um, and group classes will be spaced out, just like our other programs that we're having. Um, and we don't, we will inform people to not, you know, be too much into contact. I know it's program, some programs are contact, but we're gonna try to enforce it as much less contact with each other, if not, if, if you don't have to. And of course, our, our staff will be constantly, um, disinfecting. We just purchased two, well, for phase two, we purchased two, um, handheld spray, disinfectant sprayers. Um, and, um, we'll be using those constantly, um, throughout, throughout the facility. We'll clean that, I mean, we'll be cleaning it constantly, like I said, throughout, throughout the duration of our operation hours. Um, and we will not be using our water fountains, uh, they will not be open for usage. Also, I spoke with, uh, Boys and Girls, the, the, uh, president of the board, of the board, the Boys and Girls Club. They are, um, they said that they are willing to, or they are interested in coming back and using our facility. That's, um, as soon as it's approved, they could, it's, it's like a two-week process. They will create their own precautionary guidelines, and they will, um, look at our precautionary guidelines, and we will, um, come up with a plan together. Um, it'll take about a two-week process, so I told them whenever they're ready, after this is approved, we can, we can sit down and do a contract, and, um, hopefully we can move forward with that. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, a couple questions, um, you stated, does the rec still have money in their budget?
Yes, we have, um, specifically in our janitorial line to do cleaning, um, supplies and things like that, we have money to make sure that, that our rec is, is clean. Um, operation-wise, as far as, uh, specific lines, like, um, we're good with our electricity, all that stuff, so, um, as far as operating, keeping the lights on from that time period. Because we have been doing it from seven to three, and limiting our, our, um,
Been doing what from seven to three?
Our ele, electric use, and our heating and air, and things like that.
So is it anybody located in the building?
Yes.
Just recently, because for the whole year, it hadn't been?
For, so three o'clock, yes. Um, no, a, after three o'clock now, no one's been really in the building, uh, except myself.
Okay, and I think I asked you the last time, so you did look into it, uh, I guess Mr. Williams is still over the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, they're interested in coming back, so they would have to sign a waiver as well?
Yes.
And, uh, the monies that normally is paid to the town through the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I guess we'll have to, Ms. Nancy, go back and look at how we're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Because of, as well as the fees. Normally, we pay a yearly dues to utilize the rec center. And I guess the, um, the policy should still be the same. We might have to implement some different things in that policy because of COVID and you, you're opening, because that policy is gonna change some.
Right.
It's not gonna be the same. I know we probably hadn't looked at that, thought about that, but we're gonna have to implement and put some, uh, amended, whatever, how we're gonna do this in that policy for the Recreation Center, so we need to look at that. As well as the football team, now, and it was a basketball team. We had one of the employees that had brought to the attention, that was working for the town, but then on the side, he had kids come and play basketball, and it was charging the fee. So is it one set fee when they register for, uh, the football, uh, the basketball, and it goes to the town? Is that how that works?
Yes, it's one set fee.
And no additional fees?
No, no.
Like double-dipping?
No.
If I'm working or whatever, because that was done, and, um, so with the hours and the capacity and different things, would we need to look at it again, at the fees that we're charging, and the dues that we've been charging since? I mean, I'm just saying, throwing stuff at it that maybe we didn't think about.
Yeah, I mean, it's something to look at, um.
Are, are we going to?
Um, that's up to, oh, we can, we, we'll, 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 we'll look at them, yeah, we'll look at them.
And then bring it back, a board has to prove that normally, so.
I've asked for, as part of the budgeting process, all department heads were to look at their fee schedule for their associated department, and then submit, um, a, updated fee schedule, if the fees need to be updated to be, um, at the current market rate, and what the fees should be. So we will be looking at that, and something needs to change, before then, the fee schedule will have to be approved by the board of all of them.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Someone ring in here, Ms. Cooper?
Thank you. Um, my thing, um, it's, uh, a bit like Ms. Sutherland. Um, I was just concerned that we make sure, uh, that any new members have some of the language for, um, for the COVID-19 protocol in their membership package. And if anybody is an existing member, that maybe there is an addendum that they need to sign, um, so that they're aware of the, you know, proper protocols that need to be followed.
Right, yes, we are looking into updating our registration forms with, um, COVID guidelines and, so.
And we're, uh, do you all, are you all gonna be able to, like, have, uh, spare masks there for people who come and don't have one?
Yes, we'll have, uh, masks, and, um, thanks to you and some others who have donated masks, um, we, we have plenty masks that we already set aside for this, in case we run into.
Okay.
Being ready to open up, so, in our preparation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? Okay, and Ms. Wollin-Waver?
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Uh, we will now hear from Ms. Doris Snyder from the Senior Center.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Are you all right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm kind of projecting a little bit, so I hope so. What we have done is we've worked at the Senior Center for a reopening proposal, what we call a soft opening, because our seniors are in the seventies and eighties range, so we have to be very careful of their health. We want to do something with their interests, we want to follow the COVID-19 Executive Order two oh four, but we want to also encourage them to be healthy. And we, we do have one person on oxygen, he brings in two tanks, because he stays a while. So that's the main thing, I know a lot of people say, well, if they get sick, it's their own fault. Well, it's not gonna happen with us, not where we are, thank you. Anyway, oh, thank you. We will be seating numbers, we will be seating members in pre-designated areas with a limited capacity in each room to allow for social distances. And when we followed the rules, it was amazing to me how small it was. The two car rooms in the back, there's two and two people. And then in the middle room, on, it's six feet apart, and when we did that with the tables and everything, it was eight people. And then three people over there with the, um, TV, or three people doing billiards. So it was smaller than I thought, but we, if we go by the six rule, six-foot rule, that's what we come up with. And hopefully, this will be very temporary. There will be a separate entrance and exit to minimize standing in line, and so they won't be commingling with the Recreation Center patrons. We certainly don't want any of them being infected by the kids and vice versa. Staff will prefer, perform a temperature check, a mask check, and seniors will fill out a wellness form, and sign a waiver agreement to follow all guidelines and accept any consequences should they not adhere to the rules. We have chosen to offer activities that encompass everybody's interests and allow them to be seated. Now, in your package, you might have, if not, I have copies, the Spring Lake Senior Enrichment Center Phase One activities? No?
Thanks so much.
As you can see, we've done it in two-hour increments, based on what they're interested in and the most, and the most healthy. They love bingo, but we cannot do bingo right now, because it's, it's too many people that would be interested in it. You can't sanitize the cards, you can't sanitize the muddy enough, and it'd be too many people in the group, so we have to waylay on that. Now, these are, like I said, two-hour increments with a half hour in between, so that we can sanitize between each group. And the reason is that ten o'clock is because in the morning, they bring in food for the homebound, and we have to sort that between the hot and cold, and then sanitize that afterward. Now, um, that is called homebound meals. Now, we have something called congregant meals, that we serve in-house, Monday through Friday at eleven-thirty, but Wheels on, Meals on Wheels has informed me that they will not be doing that until July. And we don't have any control over that. So back to the board, seniors will call the day before and make an appointment for the activity block of their choice. It will be first call, first seated. At this time, there will be no food or drink served in the center. Seniors may bring a bottle of water or a drink with a lid, because you cannot use the water fountains at all. Okay, next one. We will have floor markers, standing signs, A-frame floor signs, mask signs, and traffic flow floor stickers in place. And the reason we can do this is we got a two-thousand-dollar grant, COVID grant, and anything that's related to COVID, we can buy. And they will reimburse us to the penny, and also you don't have to have a match. Routine sanitation will be done prior to opening, between appointment blocks and after the last guest leaves. We will use an aerated sprayer with CDC-approved sanitation tablets that miss all objects, I'm really glad we can get that. Provide hand sanitizer stations, use disposable pens, and we'll post rules in high-traffic areas about washing your hands, the mask, and the six-foot distance. Any person found to be in violation of our guidelines, refusing to wear a mask, or that we suspect has an elevated temperature, will be asked to leave. I hate that, but you gotta have something to, gotta have something. The outside walk-in area to include the walking trail and the exercise equipment located on the trail will be available at any time. So if people want to congregate in groups, they can't do it in the Senior Center, because we're responsible for them there. But if they want to go outside and do it, I hope they wear their mask, and I hope they may have, you know, sense about it. But we can't control them out on the walking trail. So if they want to have a meeting of a club or something like that, they can do it outside. We will have some guests who may be exempt from mask guidelines, and we will deal with them on a one-to-one basis, like the guy with the oxygen, for example. Thank you very much, if you have any ideas to help us out, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Yes, I was kind of curious, um, would you be looking at the cards that they give when they get their shots, you know, with, doing?
Oh, checking on the shots?
Right, the senior citizens?
Uh, we can, we have not, we have not thought about that. Are we gonna make it mandatory for that, do you think?
No, um, I'm passing it on to you, that you might, if they come in with a card, they show that they had the shots, and, you know, they're, as seniors, they'd probably had to have shots back in February timeframe or something. So they should be pretty well protected, uh, still with a mask, but, um, you could probably go with that feet, or something like that.
Okay.
But that'd be your call.
That'll sure help in, in the processing of them in the morning.
Yeah, because you, you're talking, uh, six feet, you're talking six feet apart, but you're also talking seventy-five percent.
Yes, sir.
Um, so which one is gonna weigh? But if they've got these cards, that should even help you out a little bit more.
So the capacity limit is for, it's seventy-five percent, um, so they're good use of it, because max you have ten people, or you have twenty. The actual number, they, they removed that in this executive order, it's just a capacity limit based on your occupancy. So, but you still have to maintain a six-foot distance, so the seventy-year occupancy, seventy-five percent of the twenty persons, which your usual non-COVID occupancy would be, you're seventy-five percent of that, but you still have to be six feet apart. So those are gonna be, there are gonna be some self-limiting factors to the occupancy numbers anyways.
And the occupancy number for our center is only fifty. We do more than that at a birthday party.
Oh, Ms. Cooper?
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say too, um, I know that, um, Ms. Thompson-Zadu has, um, helped a lot of our seniors get vaccinated. So how can we take that into consideration when we look at the, you know, the six feet and the other guidelines? Because, uh, you know, I'm pretty sure there are a lot of them that have been vaccinated, so we might want to look at that and be able to increase a little bit.
We'll take a look at the CDC guidelines and consult with health officials about using, uh, smaller social distancing, um, six-foot versus three-foot for vaccinations, um, and if whether or not requiring a vaccination card, uh, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sutherland?
Thank you.
We want to make sure the town is not in violation of asking for those cards, so make sure, because what I've been told is, with the medical privacy, you're not supposed to ask for them. So just, I'm just saying, I don't know, but, uh, just make sure, because there was some companies doing that, and they said it was a violation of their HIPAA law. So, but it's good to know, to carry, cause, you know, a care of mine, but just make sure that we're not in violation. Check it with them, to see if we can do that.
Uh, so, so for my opinion, I, I don't know if we should necessarily be treating people with vaccines different than people without vaccines.
Exactly.
I think we should do whatever the state does. The state forces us to do that, and we do it, the state doesn't force us to do that, we don't.
That's right.
And just to reiterate, with the vaccine, uh, the ninety-five and ninety percent efficacy rate, that's, that's assuming that you are still wearing a mask and being, and keeping six feet apart. So whether you have the vaccine or don't have the vaccine, you should treat the same as everyone else. Everyone should be wearing a mask, everyone should be socially distancing. But is there anyone else have, uh, an idea?
Yeah, I mean, you still wear the mask, I'm just saying, and I'm not saying require them to show it. I'm just saying, we might be able to have a little more leeway, because if a majority of them are vaccinated, and if they're willing to show it, um, without, you know, you're not gonna pressure them, but...
But just if they're willing to show that they're vaccinated, we might be able to have more leeway and allow them to have, um, more participation because they've been locked up for a long time. And I just, you know, if they're able to, if we're able to help more of them, be able to come together is all, that's all I'm concerned with.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, do you have any thoughts? I'm getting this mail.
I agree with the fact that we need to go by what the CDC said.
Okay.
I agree with everything, um, going by what the CDC says, that we follow each and every directive what the government is, the governor is asking us to do.
Okay, Ms. Wilonwaver?
So those are the plans as presented. Um, at Town Hall, we would also have the screening checks. Um, there are monitors that can be mounted on the walls that people can, um, have their temperature read. And we will make sure we have a consistent waiver form and the appropriate forms that are reviewed by legal counsel prior to any use of those. Um, so the, the main item that we need board approval from would be the actual opening date. Um, if that was, the closure to be May 3rd and if that's for all facilities or just parks for ex-senior, um, or parks for ex-senior and, um, Town Hall.
What do you recommend?
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion that we move that all facilities were open on the 3rd of, um, May and Town Hall.
Ms. Cooper?
I second that motion.
Well, I guess unreadiness. Uh, I have a question. Would you recommend the May 3 date for, uh, opening all these things?
I recommend the May 3 date as long as we can get, if there's a motion on the floor, that it be amended to say as long as the appropriate, um, screening measures and we have everything in place. And at April 26th, meaning if I see that we will not have everything in place, just because one supply and demand right now for a lot of these items, um, including stuff like Plexiglas for customer service, um, making sure that we have the appropriate measures in place. If those are not in place, then we would need to push it back.
Could we make it subject to changes in state and federal guidelines? Is that acceptable? Mr. Charleston?
Yeah, I, I think it is. I think the key thing, though, is what the interim manager indicated that, uh, if, if she's not been able to secure and make the facility safe, that she has in her discretion to extend that
Okay.
without coming back to the board.
Okay. Did we make a new motion for that?
I amend it, uh, with those conditions.
Okay. Um, anyone else who seconded?
I second that with this said amendment.
Okay, any, or not, did you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, you said the May 3rd?
Yeah, May 3rd.
Yes, sir.
Uh, would any of these sections be ready prior to May 3rd? Seeing how we already have them put on 75% of senior senior or the gymnasium? May 3rd? Ma'am?
Yeah, a motion.
I'm sorry, did you address it to me? I couldn't hear you.
It's a motion.
It's a motion in a second.
Was that, maybe it's unreadiness?
Yeah.
All right. So I, I think his question is...
Can we do earlier than that?
Yeah.
I know we haven't ordered any supplies yet because, one, due to budget restraints, we wanted to make sure the board was of understanding and approval for us to open on that date. So we had to order all those supplies, um, and get them in, get them installed. So I do not think it will be feasible before May 3rd. The original Phase Three, um, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, was going to be the end of May, beginning of June. Um, Parks and Rec has actually started Phase Two, which is prior, which was approved by the board, um, earlier this year. And they're doing organized outdoor activities now. So this is only for all the indoor facilities. Um, but I, I personally do not think it's feasible to get everything in and installed and all of our forms reviewed, printed, everything we need in place by May 3rd.
Okay. So then, if there's nothing else, let's go to the vote. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say nay. Okay, moving on. Uh, 8C, approval to appoint interim town manager as interim finance director. Ms. Wilonwaver, if you would?
So I was, um, previously, previously discussed, there was prior motions that the interim town manager, who at the time was Mr. Adam Lindsay, was appointed as the interim finance director. Mr. Lindsay is no longer with the town. So as the interim town manager, um, we would need to appoint myself as the interim finance director. The LGC is aware of this action, um, and is supportive of this. And it is at the discretion of the board. Ms. Gail Tucker, she will continue to help with the finance director duties, but she will resume her title of the account, town's accounts payable. And Ms. Nancy Medlin, who was, um, here working on behalf of the college, is also helping with our financial, um, department.
Okay, any thoughts? Ms. Southernland and Mr. Garrett?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the interim...
Uh, excuse me, I have something to say.
Okay.
Excuse me.
You can still say it after the unreadiness. When you say unreadiness, you can still say it. Still making my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Southernland.
You're welcome, Ms. Jackson. I've, I've made my motion.
Ms. Jackson, you're unreadiness?
Oh, we have to...
Yes.
And Dennis, unreadiness.
I, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, you're unreadiness?
Yes, I do have unreadiness. Um, and moving forward and with the town of, of everything that we have discussed, one thing that some of our board members, and Ms. Southernland was one of them, um, um, insisted on that we start hiring people with experience. So now, we're getting ready to take another position that is pertinent to the town, one of the top positions. And we're again putting someone inexperienced in that position. So I just wanted to be on record and noted that the board, some of the board members, um, and the same board members that had said before to make sure that we do things in this and that order and make sure that people have their job experience by them, that we are again, doing it again, hiring someone or putting someone in that position temporarily who has no experience. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
I'm wondering, how would you be able to hold this position with no budget experience? What will your duties be? Or will this just be a title?
Okay, I think Ms. Southernland has the unreadiness.
Uh, in order to continue to go by the guidelines of the LGC, with them not taking our power to be able to operate as a town with our police department, our fire department, all the employees, it was on the table that the LGC would take over the powers of the town. We put it in place with Mr. Lindsay as well as Ms., uh, Samantha. She's talked to the LGC. They will be here on the 26th. It is an open meeting to the community. Come out and see just how bad the funds are. We have no fund balance. So, in order, I have stated that you should have experience. We interviewed Ms. Samantha. She has experience. She's working with the proper people in place with accounting. We hired finance directors with no experience and paid them top dollar, my tax dollar. Not speaking as a board. All the citizens in the community, tax dollar has been displenty. There's no money for the town. In order for the LGC to continue to, for us to keep our powers, we need to have proper people in place. Thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Cooper has a comment?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wilonwaver, um, stated that the local government commission is, um, in agreement with us that we need to take this action. Um, we are under a very, um, we're, we're being watched carefully.
We're under watch this.
We need to, um, we need to make this move in order to move forward and, um, start making some, um, better financial decisions. We still have Ms. Nancy Medlin there to, um, guide us. So I, I think this is something that we need to do. We, we cannot keep Mr. Lindsay as the finance director. And, um, the state auditor has made it clear that, um, Ms. Tucker is not capable of doing this, so. Uh, again, I think we need to move forward and make Ms. Wilonwaver, uh, the interim finance director. Well, it's been seconded.
Any more thoughts?
Uh, yes. Um, Mr. Lindsay is in favor. When Ms. Lindsay came here, we didn't know it. At least the board didn't know. But, uh, Mr. Lindsay was already in process of finding a house for me in Fayetteville. And, uh, he came in here and he learned about all our economic development.
This is really not, this is really not on this particular topic. It's just focused on the particular topic of whether or not Ms. Milneff and that the Wilonwaver should be appointed as the interim finance director. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't think she should be taking instructions from somebody that, uh, works in Fayetteville.
Okay. Uh, so I think everyone's spoken. Let me give me, uh, my two thoughts. Uh, I think since I've been on this board, everyone on this board has said that the finance director should be under the town manager. That has been one of the few things that has been unanimous on this board. This just seems like what we're doing, but we're putting the position of finance director under the town manager. That's really all I have to say. But then I think let's just put to a vote. The vote started there, I guess. Let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against, say nay.
Right.
Okay. So that's Resolution 2021, right? That's who we voted on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's do...
I might also add, Mayor Protem, just, uh, just to give some assurances. Um, the, uh, the interim town manager is meeting with the LGC and, and on a frequent basis. And I believe they met today. And so the LGC is very much involved with what's going on here. And I think it's important to point out that whatever the situation is in the town, uh, the interim town manager didn't create it, uh, nor did Mr. Lindsay create it. And so the town, the LGC is comfortable with, uh, what is, where we are right now in terms of how we move forward.
Okay. So moving on to item 8E of the office. Please speak after me. Aye, Samantha Wilonwaver?
Aye, Samantha Wilonwaver.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws...
I will support and maintain, maintain the Constitution and laws...
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As interim finance director for the town of Spring Lake, North Carolina.
As interim finance director for the town of Spring Lake, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. So moving on to 8F, uh... Okay. Moving on to 8F, application for Recreation Advisory Committee. Ms. Piera?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Board of Alderman. Our present seat tonight, um, two applications.
You need to get the lights a little bit bigger.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Sorry, the lights aren't here.
I bring these two applications tonight. One for the Recreation Advisory Committee to appoint Ms. Jamie McLaughlin to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Motion to approve.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Ms. Jamie McLaughlin to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Um, I'm looking, just to point, um, her application, uh, has her name spelled one way and, um, on here it's spelled another. Can we correct that, um, when we add her name to the list?
I'm sorry, what was the issue?
There's an E at the, um, end of her name and it's not on her application. So, but on, um, the, um, paper was here. There's an X, there's an E at the end of her name. So I'm just saying, please correct that for the record.
Okay. So noted. Is there a second? Ms. Southernland?
I second that motion with the correction.
Okay. Uh, let's vote on it. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, uh, against, say nay. Okay. Moving on, uh, 8G, Application for Military and Veterans Committee. Ms. Piera?
Yes, I have another application here from Military and Veterans Committee to appoint Mr. Joshua Maynard to the Military and Veterans Committee.
Ms. Southernland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Joshua Maynard to the Military and Veterans Committee.
Ms. Cooper?
I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, one second. Unread?
Uh, how's woman, is he here now?
Is Mr. Maynard here? I don't believe so. Cool. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, I think that's it for the open session. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion for closer? Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I make a motion that we go into closed session for, um, personnel, privileged information, attorney-client, privilege in economic development.
Great, Mr. Garrett?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. Uh, we are now going to close.
Okay.
Oh yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, go ahead. I move that we come out of closed session. Ms. Cooper?
I speak, I speak another motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All again saying nay. Okay, so we are now in open session. Is there another motion? I move that we appoint Ms. Melissa Piera as the interim town clerk. I'm not sure if you're all in favor. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All again say nay.
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 Okay, well, so that's it. One more motion? I move that we adjourn.
I didn't hear all the votes.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought.
Was it a two?
Two ayes.
Yeah, two ayes, two ayes.
What did mayor say?
Mayor, what did you say?
What's the question?
Appointing Ms. Melissa Piera as the interim town clerk.
Uh, is that a question to me?
Yes, you're the deciding vote.
So, I am the deciding vote?
Yes.
So, two say no and two say yes?
Yes.
As the interim town clerk?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Uh, yes, the vote is on the interim town clerk.
I, I, I agree. We need, we need a town clerk, yes.
Okay, so that's three and two, so.